To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to do the...
I move that we accept the consent set agenda as presented.
Second, we have a question. Next up comes what would mean number none. Let's move right into cabinet ministry this report.
I have nothing to know except for the fact that we had our heat pumps installed today.
Those come on the way in the building. Too right out there.
It appears to be complete, but we'll have more information tomorrow.
Any future agenda ideas? Hearing none, we'll move right into business item board of selecteds, application for abatement. With number one being Quentin and Diane Delano, map R07-05. It looks like this one looks pretty straightforward. It's the correction of the number of bathrooms and age of dwelling. So we went from... Three bedrooms to actually two, two bathrooms to actually one. It says it was built in 1979. It is actually built in 1955. And those are the corrections that were made. It's a damp basement instead of a dry. Any questions?
I guess how did that data get changed on here?
Jessica from Parker appraisal reviewed the file again and she made appropriate changes based on...
So how did we up the bedrooms in the first place to what was...
Well, we don't have the previous files. There could have been a mistake.
It could have just been inputted keystroke error.
It could be anything.
It just seems like there's a lot of that.
There's nothing saying it was correct last time either. Without the vision card in front of us, we don't know if it was correct last time.
And the property already here for this one?
So I guess I don't have the concerns on this one.
So the abatement is for $37.99.
I move that we approve the abatement.
My second half.
We have the switcher to get an abatement and the letter for the chair to sign.
Abatement number two Suzanne Dow. Map what U21001.
Are they here? They are not. I actually spoke with Ms. Dow this morning and she said she was satisfied with what Parker was recommending. So she said she would not be here.
So this change from a river title three to a river title two, is that the only change?
And that's where I love to see the information on the gradients and values because I don't know what that is.
My other question is there's a red mark in acreage, but there's no change in acreage. So is that correct or does that need to be changed?
Last page. Let's see, I have both property cards here.
Just .59 and it's in a...
Oh.
Red. So was that...
That's correct. That's correct.
And you said you talked to Ms. Dow and she was...
She was fine with what Parker is recommending.
So she's looking for a tax abatement of 147424?
That is the abated tax.
Yeah, the old was 5077 and the new is 3603?
Yes, that's correct.
So her lowered full tax amount would be $3,603.32.
So I guess I... And I feel like I'm a broken record here, but we're asked to approve information. And I don't know what the valuation of changing from title two to title three is for us to say this is an accurate tabulation. So I don't... It's concerning.
They carefully reviewed all of the files that were submitted for abatement. And this is what they came up with. They made changes. They reviewed it.
So it looks like she was taxed on deep water frontage, but it's actually title. And that it was a one acre lot and it looks like it's been reduced to 0.51.
And if that's accurate, then it should be abated as such, but I don't have any way without the data to confirm it one way or the other. And that's what my concern is.
So we're getting these though based on Parker's appraisal and his opinion. So we're assuming that his math...
But it's the figures on, yes, the math is accurate, but there's elements that feed into this equation that we're being asked to accept site encasing, and that's my concern.
But this is what Parker appraisal was recommending and the homeowner has no...
I'm sure the homeowner doesn't have a problem getting money back. I just want to make sure that they shouldn't be getting it back.
But what way is there to tell Parker?
That's my point is we don't have, we're supposed to have, and I asked at the previous meeting, to understand the difference in value from title three to title two. It's a formula that we should be able to confirm. So that's my, I have no problem moving forward with this one Kathy, because we have someone here. My concern is that I want to do what's right for the community as a whole. And I feel like I need a challenge on that. And that's my very serious concern here. On that note, I move that we accept the abatement as presented. We have a second.
My second half.
And then we take a vote in favor.
Well, she first, my second is only...
I know, we have to do it by record.
Number three Anne Arden, R03-029.
I first landed with Anne today and she said she's thrilled with the result and will not be attending tonight's meeting.
I agree with the reduction of $2,000 too.
The tree growth apparently wasn't in the file when Parker appraisal reviewed this initially. So with the classification, it was the easy fix.
The 15 acres goes into farmland.
Did you say tree growth or farmland?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was farmland.
Yeah, this looks like it's used for hay.
So they hated last year, but it wasn't in that assumption, that they paid full value? Or did they just start paying this year?
No, when Parker appraisal did the rebalance and they were reviewing all the files, the tree growth, the, I'm sorry, the farmland application was not in the file because they did not see.
Actually, Ben tends 2007. It's not new. It's Ben's 2007.
But I'm wondering why it was $900,000 in value last year? If it was in the value, I guess that's... If it was in there already, why is it now a value of 300,000 dollars less?
That's the old value for the rebound.
Right.
That's what they came up with initially. Not considering the farmland designation.
That's the new they did without the farmland.
So what, hold on, let me just see last year's. I have the property card here. For the 3D7 there is no, sorry folks, I just need to make sure we're doing the right thing here. Yeah, I have them here. I just need to... So here I have a question on Ireland actually. As we head into this, which bothers me even more so, is that they claim to have waterfrontage. It's called, let's see. It says, I'm sorry, Shore, is there in Shoreland Zone 6?
Now, on this one, they changed it to river title two and then changed it across that and put it to paved.
And then it says zero feet of shore frontage. So I don't know how that can be. And that's on the property card. So I just don't get this, to be frankly honest. And you're asking us to abate stuff. It doesn't make sense. So if they have shore frontage...
These acres are not waterfront and I don't believe there's a sale. This is in part of her statement saying it's not waterfront.
But one of the statements says it is. So which is accurate?
Well, they changed it here too. So it's been changed.
It's not waterfront.
Try this on this paperwork saying it's not waterfront.
But even on the card last year, it says waterfront.
I know, I just don't, again, it's going to take some time to get the card straight. Just trying to see, your code. I don't know, so she was not waterfront either.
I think it is waterfront.
With the new with this map they drew?
So that's my question. I, the water's right here. So I, what's the date of this one? It's 10th of...
Yeah, so October 29th would be...
I move that...
60 days.
If we deny it, it'll just go to...
Right, but the data needs to be tabulated and corrected prior to that is my point. So we can... I don't know what the right answer to that is because there's, it's not jiving. I move that we deny it. And they can go and fight it out in person.
I second that. So these already have a deny on them. So...
They're asking us to make a decision on it. That's...
All right, so for D Lloyd and Robin Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got some other...
Your map what you 13-009? So this is 84 Kings Point?
Yeah.
And you're saying your title waters, not deep water?
Correct. This is initial information since the abatement's file.
So if we deny this tonight, are you ready what the next process would be?
No, we're not. I think this has gone on long enough. We have title front property. There was a mistake made. He assured us when we came for our initial interview that it would be reduced. We took him at his word. We should have had him write it out initially. We just have too much faith in what people tell us. And he didn't follow through with it. He changed the description on it to title, but they did not change the assessment like he said he was going to.
So I'm showing in your prior card, it was on the prior property card for last year. It says river and title. And on this property card, it just says waterfront. So I don't know, I'm sorry, it was reversed of that. It says Trio just says title, river and title three.
There will be some differences between the way vision presents and trio presents.
That's really good.
But all of the ones on the outer river are riverfront title three also. They're not title property like we are in that cove where mud, clam, fly.
There's a difference in deep waterfrontage and title waterfrontage.
You see with this one, they're entitled. And you go to the next one and they're going deep water. So cards don't match.
They don't match. And but there's also...
This one was old and one of...
But my point, so listen, again, if I had the value where I could look at title three and title five in the book that I've been asking for, we could then say what it should be. But I don't have that in front of me.
That's what she has been asking for for three months.
I'm with you. And so I don't know how to tabulate what the value and the amount of land and all of that. Again, it's a basic formula, but we don't have the data to tabulate it one way or the other for you. And unfortunately, a lot of the perceived alterations that you were told were going to happen were not put onto some of the property cards. So that's unfortunately, we don't have the ability to see that here either.
Yeah, when we first started talking to Bob, when we first initially came in, we told him who we were and where our property was. And he had a map out in front of him on the table. And he said, yeah, I have you right here and you are deep waterfrontage. This whole area is. And you're not overvalued because two properties near you were sold recently for over $700,000. We said we are not deep waterfrontage. And I stood up and looked over at the map.
He had the end of Foster's point.
He was Foster's point, rolling down at the end of Foster's point.
He has the right map for us.
He had no idea what he was doing.
So here's the...
We gave him a map that we had gotten from the town office. It showed where we were located. He said he would reexamine us.
They have a lot of...
If we were title waterfrontage, like we said, then our land value would be reduced. And I asked him how much? He said 75 to $100,000. I said, all right, do you know when the reevaluation is going to be finished? He said the town office should have it in seven to 10 days. A while later, I guess he got it in about on time, we went up and dusted second caller. He did change us from deep waterfrontage to title waterfrontage, but he didn't reduce the land value at all. It was still essentially the same. So we lied about that. I don't know what else he's lied about, but...
So are you comfortable tabling this for us to look at this, to pause it? You're approaching your 60-day window, which we have to give a decision on. You filed on August 31st. I'd like to have more information looked into on this before we deny it one way or the other. You still have the opportunity to be, if you want, we can deny it and you can go to the Board of Appeals.
No, we don't want to go to the Board of Appeals. This is...
It's been a grand old one. The mistakes were made.
Board of Assessors, sorry, that's...
You have a Board of Assessors.
Board of Assessment review is the next step.
All they do is, all they need to do is correct the mistakes that were made. Title waterfrontage and deep waterfrontage is not the same value.
Is it enough for you Carly if they say they're in agreement to...
Well, that's a question for the attorney.
Yeah. And one thing I'd like to point out is that they were actually stabilized. They applied for the stabilization. So their taxes did not increase this year.
But they won't actually...
I'm just saying, they're saying Lloyd was saying it's a mistake. We just want the mistake corrected. If they're comfortable waiting a little bit longer, we can have the answers that you're looking for and simply correct the mistake rather than them having to go before the Board of Assessment.
Because they're going to have to, or they have to come back either next year, even though you're stabilized this year, it doesn't go away. So we need to fix it properly.
I'm saying fix it during the year rather than going to the Board of Assessment.
Yeah, we really don't want to go to the appeal stuff. You could take the time. We've paid our taxes. We've just waiting on it to get corrected. I'm making motion that we tabulate Lloyd and Robin Johnson to get answers.
I second that.
All in favor? Thank you.
And we'll be no side of this proceeding.
Absolutely. We'll stay in touch.
All right.
Can you make your summary for anything?
No, I would just get some answers and... You don't find this enjoyable?
I did want to, if you don't mind Kathy, revisit Ireland for a moment because I just want to make sure you did what you intended to do because you outright, did you table or deny that one?
That was denied.
It was denied. I just, do you...
No, I don't see it.
Do you want to wait for more information and check it up again? Or did you really want to deny it?
So let's look at the date. Hold on. The 29th is the date for that one, I believe.
We need to know if it's title, if it's ocean, if it's a deep water.
Do you want me to ask her if she would be interested in extending or do you want to get on?
I would rather extend these and figure them out properly.
Yeah, there's more question that may answer to this one.
Do you want to make a motion to amend? I move that we amend the denial of Anne Ireland's abatement to be tabled.
The next one is Patrick and Emily Johnson.
I think, okay. I don't want to get caught up.
24, four, we'll draw.
Okay, let's take the stack.
Do you see any market on this anywhere, Christine?
The submitted comps, this one, that was prepared by Parker appraisal. So it's not necessarily a red mark.
And that's the only thing they gave us was that.
And I believe the next page also.
So we only have one comp, which is 76 Mountain Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
One comp.
One comp. And then he also submitted three market analysis, I think.
Either in Parker or you did, okay. That's what I'm trying to follow with this.
So we got our initial reevaluation letter. We called the town and they said that they would take into account only appraisals that were done within the prior three years. We had had two independent appraisals done within the last three years. I submitted those. Then I had a phone call with Bob and Bob said that he didn't feel those were valid. So he said if we got a further market analysis from a Realtor that disagreed with the value, that he would look into that. So we went, we got another market analysis from a Realtor in August.
That does...
That is, yes, that's that. They agreed with the appraisal. So I guess we have two real estate appraisals and a market analysis from Andrea Galusa that put our home at significantly lower value than it's been valued at. I'm not sure what else I would need to submit to prove kind of where we're at.
I don't want to speak for Parker appraisal since they're not here, but my understanding is they didn't take the comps into account because they were in different towns.
It's not really how real estate works now.
And that's kind of, I mean, that's not how, I mean, that's not how an appraisal works work. I guess I'd be happy to go pay for another appraisal if that's what's necessary, but I'm not sure where else to go then, I guess. And then the reasoning that we got from Parker appraisal, we used one of the comps, which was also had the municipal assessment at 25% above what the assessed value was that the comp provided. So that would seem to say that both the comp property and our property are overvalued in the municipal assessment compared to the assessments that we provided. It seemed that the reasoning that they gave seemed to support what I was saying versus what Parker appraisal was saying. It's easier, I just kind of summarize all the values on the page so you guys can kind of see where our reasoning is.
So on here it says the solar panels are supposed to be exempt.
Yep, so the, so the, so the valuation doesn't exempt the solar panels, but there's an exemption below for fifty thousand dollars total. Twenty-five of that is our home sit exemption and the other balance is a solar panel. So it doesn't change the valuation of the home, it's just a tax exemption after the evaluation.
I'd love to see what they value forty-one tide and that, which is on your appraisal.
I'm ready.
And that's here.
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. Hold on, cause you have the on this appraisal.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They doubled our value too.
Well, let me just take a peek at what your value is compared to what.
It doesn't seem like some of your properties to me. From what I can tell, his doesn't have waterfront.
We're on the lake.
Oh, okay, the title of town, no there, so certainly not.
Well, they claimed it was waterfront, actually.
It is, it is waterfront, it's called a tertiary waterfront, right up the bar, so.
But see, that's where, it says here, three river title one, but I don't know what that meant, so I can't comment on that. But I, let me look at yours to. So they compared both your properties to seventy-six Mountain Road, the only one in West half that they felt was an active transaction. So. We have time to table this one. It was on September sixth. I would think it's November sixth.
So what else are we, I guess I'm trying to, what else are we looking, what else are you looking to provide? What else is, what are we looking to provide?
I'm trying to figure out the difference in values on here. I look at, you know, say, again, it says title three. I, I, I want to have a conversation with Parker appraisal, to be frank, and some of that, because I don't understand some of the things that are on here and how. When I look, if they told you to go and get appraisals and here they are and why they aren't valid. When I look at the ironic pieces, they're using someone in this room's house who has one of those values.
Now, you know, what he, what he, and again, this is, these are the phone conversations that we had. What he said to me is if you can get a market analysis that is greater than ten percent different from what we had. I'm allowed to tend it, and that's what we did, as well as two additional appraisals that were done within three years. I mean, I, I don't know what else. I guess what we're talking about is what is fair market.
That's kind of what I want to table it, because I need to ask them some questions and they're not here.
Sure.
Can I ask a question that's, I think is relevant? I would say this, this comp that. You can see it's, it's my property and seventy-six. There's two things, there's a town assessment and there's an appraisal assessment.
So the appraisal assessment for my property is the, no, it isn't, that's. I don't know what the.
I mean, for me, this seems close, the appraisal assessment seems close to the market value.
So that's, well, it's interesting because the appraisal assessment in mine is the one that I submitted that was eight hundred and eighty-seven. So the one on that one is eleven seventy-five.
So, but so, yeah, the, well, this is my.
It's different.
This is.
Oh, that's yours, okay.
Yours is.
No, mine's a point on hundred. Yeah, they, they use.
But, but the point is.
Just because this is on the record and we've, can you explain what you're referencing? Are you on the website or you're?
I'm, this comp.
He's looking at this.
Okay, complex.
We have a.
So I just wondered.
Sorry, that your laptop camera is being on the website.
What, what the town assessment is versus the appraisal assessment? Because I'm being assessed the town assessment. But the appraisal assessment looks to me to be the actual market value of my house. So that's my question, what are those two values?
And I, I know you want to talk with Parker, but I think what they're saying in this instance is that those. Two parcels are being valued at the same relation to market value.
I guess that's the question.
You know, and it's, it's just value because they're being assessed at the same.
Understood.
Relation.
And, but, but Mr. Nelson was asked to do some additional work to get a market analysis of which he complied. And yet there has been no difference one way or the other to accommodate that, so I don't know.
If that change was accommodated, I think that would mean that they would have to adjust all of the parcels. Just to keep it equitable, just so they do it, I understand. But it wouldn't stop at that property, it would have to continue to all our property.
That may, I, I don't know how to.
I'm not arguing, I'm just talking.
Understood. And I, I think that we need to, I move that we table this. I move that we table, um, want to ask Nelson. Are you okay with that feeling?
Yeah, if we're tabling to ask Parker appraisal more questions.
I'm asking for, I, I need to validate some of the information, what you've said and what they've said to even make a decision.
I mean, I get very much what you're saying, it makes sense, they're saying we use the same method.
Yes.
To value other properties.
Right.
That method shows that both my property and the seventy-six Mountain Road property is valued at twenty-five percent above what market is.
And you were then, you received an appraisal that, what you were told to get, or a market analysis that you were told to get.
That's the number they used.
Right. So. So I think.
And I'm happy to get, and if they, if they want an actual appraisal, I'm happy to do more.
Let's, let's hold that for a second, see where we end up with this. I move that we table Patrick and Emily Nelson at twenty-four wheel drive until further discussion with Parker appraisal can be had.
My second, yeah, all in favor?
Yeah, keep this.
Absolutely, yeah, please do, I got, would you like?
Yeah, she did have to.
Just in the presented summary.
Some light reading for me. Oh, my word, okay.
Okay. Number E, Dean Rowan and Lori Shaw. U two, seven, oh, three, six. One twenty-three Brimstone Road. Do you have one of those images?
Hold on, let me find that one. Okay, so here's, I have a question right after that. I'm looking at, what is this? Trio, which is our current software. It said four river title two and then zero shore frontage. I'm not sure how that works, so I have questions on how that data is in this.
I don't know, here it's river title three.
So I've got four two, and then, and this, this is the trio card. Which is our new software versus vision. And, and last year they had two hundred and eight feet. So I'm not sure what.
Still showing two oh eight feet.
But not on the property card.
I'll do that to them.
Huh? I said go do that. I'm just saying, I, I have conflicting information. So it's on the valuation report, like shore frontage?
It says river title three, two hundred and eight feet shore.
If it's on the valuation report, how would it not be on the property card?
Well, I'm wondering if that property card at the top is just, is that just a note? It says zero. I know, but. Four, I don't, but I, it said two hundred and eight feet last year, is my point. In a different software, I'm just wondering if this. Which one? I'm just wondering if up at the top where it says shore frontage, if. If that's something that is just for reference and the. Not a value that's calculated on another section of the software. I'm just wondering. I don't, I don't know. And then, but there's also, and it also says, are there two parcels here? Cause when I look at the houses in Trio, those are completely different. This matches, that floor plan matches the cutout there. But this one is a completely different structure here.
This one they just got an X, so you can step in house.
But see, but if you look at, if you compare that from picture, here's your, your little porch, your side.
Yeah.
And then if I, and then if you turn around, I was looking at calculating the data on it. It's just, something's not jiving on this.
Yeah, they got a second house stuck out here, there's not a picture of a second house.
I don't know. This card two of two, card one of two, I don't know what that means.
Those are a little different.
They're very different. And this has a, a, a second story and this says it's one story. So I don't know. There was, I was highlighting the differences that I found in cards.
This one says one and a half stories.
But, so which, which is the, are there two separate?
It looks like it's in there, but it's very, very.
Yeah?
Yeah, there's one that's clearly marked old, which was the initial values, eight key master and evaluation, and then a corrected version.
But there's two different houses.
Well, that's fine, I'm just saying there are two different values.
Why don't they correct it?
Not say old. Cause that one says old, you keep going.
No. Hold it there, I got.
Oh, okay. There's one other structure I, I don't. I don't miss. That's how I remember seeing a match lock. Structure.
They got all the names on here except for this. I think we need to table this one, this is clear as mud. Now this one here, so it went from zero point three eight acres to zero point zero four acres.
Are, are that here? No, they're not here.
So does that mean? Yeah, yeah, one point. Now that would be one point. So you got four acres. Yeah, that's the correct one, so it went there and went up three eight acres to one point zero four. And then that factor you were talking about. Changed. And we didn't.
Well, I don't know what the, what the factor, what you're from rental five to a hundred and why.
That means.
Well, that's, that's one of the values that would be apparent on the metrics shared with us from Parker.
So that are the only two things I see that changed and it's made quite a reduction.
That's a significant reduction for, for those who attend. Yes. What's the date they filed this?
Um, Rowan. Eight thirty-one.
My sent data.
Eight thirty-one. We got there at the top right?
Um, yeah.
So this all. This is they're going to change the taxes, so I think we can.
I think we should deny this and let, well, or, cause this is the, they're abated, they have stabilized tax rate.
Right. So I wonder if this we should just table and then it gives them the time to get it straight and go to the right amount.
Yep.
Cause it's not.
It's not a change of tax here. Understood. So we should deny it?
No, table.
Table it?
So they don't have to go to the.
Yes. I move that we table Dean Rowan and Lori Shaw of. One twenty-three Brimstone Co Road.
My second, yeah, all in favor? Next one, I can see the ballpark of the Board of Assessors if they don't have to.
Understood.
Okay, North Room and All Life, so there's number one. And then Daniel, I know, I lost my, it's a thick one. No, I lost my agenda. Uh, but I'll just go with this one here. Daniel Willitt.
Willite.
Willite, revocable trust, U one, three dash, oh, three, four, dash, B oh, two. And this is forty-one tide end road.
Yes.
Did you, have you seen this?
Yeah, have I seen what?
What they recommended for.
Yes, and I'm, I'm, I'm not happy with that.
See, you see the total reduction. Amount matches a reduction that was previously agreed to with the, so they had agreed to a number?
Yeah, well, so I went to the meeting, I, you know, said I feel like my property is overvalued, showing my documentation. And he, he stopped, he did a couple of things on his computer, he turned the monitor around. And it's, he's like, what do you think about this? And I'm like, that looks exactly like what my things are, it's great. And, and he's like, okay. And I'm like, we shook on it, I walked out and then nothing changed. So, you know, it's, I, I echo these people's sentiment that I really wish I had known more about it. I really wish we could have gotten something right. I, I wish I would have understood what that whole process was at the time I did it. You know, it's like, I, I was just, I didn't know really, I thought they were going to make the change, I thought he had made the change. I didn't realize it was just, oh, we're going to take this and go talk about it and make a decision. You know, it sounded to me, he didn't resist at all. He didn't offer any counter argument. He was like, yeah, yeah, okay. And he's like, how about this number? And I'm like, that's great. And then I left and, and then nothing happened.
So did you supply the market analysis?
Yeah.
And they still said no?
Evidently. You know, I mean, yeah, I mean, they, I have a, a response here, a letter that, where they responded, do you have that?
Let me see what the first page looks like and I can.
It's just one page.
This will let it be kind of certificate overpaid.
No, I think she's got it.
This one?
Yeah, that's it.
Well, that's it, that's assuming that we approve it tonight.
Oh, but, but it just, it kind of gives a little bit of explanation about why this middle paragraph, you know, it says. But I don't understand it, like, it, I, you know. You know, it says, but I don't understand it, like, it, I, you know, it's not very legible to me. And so, like, I don't, what, my, my issue is, I don't know. I'd love to see the formula. I'd love to see the data that was fed into the formula, and then I could, you know, if I understood all that, I could, I could like, okay, you know.
In theory, it's a math formula. You should be able to plug in values, and you should be able to tabulate, and that's what I've been trying to acquire. And, um, and so that's my ultimate frustration, is that there's no way for anyone to validate the information that's been given to them, and everyone has the right to do that.
Right. And, and then, and then this, this comp thing, I don't understand the two assessments. The, I don't know if the appraisal assessment, I don't know what that, what that is, I, with that number, where that number comes from, and why the town assessment is different. And I just want to be clear, is this value supposed to be the market value? You know, or is it, are we taxing like, no, you've got three cows and two chickens, and it's $10 a cow, you know, $3 a chicken?
That goes on your, on a different tax form.
Yeah.
What tax do you want to have in not your house?
All my chickens are done tonight, you know? We're gonna have to try a chicken.
That's really where we need to get married. Um, so, um. Yeah, and to your point exactly, in this letter of explanation of the abatement state, however, using the assessment method of the mass appraisal approach used in town assessing, I, I don't know what that means. It just sounds like a, a lot of nothing. So we're happy to pay our taxes, we just like to understand what it is we're. So when did you file?
Oh, just a couple of weeks ago, I think.
We have a date on this at home?
November 5th is the deadline.
So we have some time. Um, you're, you're not approaching the 60 day window. My birth is, yes, right? No, he just filed.
No, my birth is the deadline, the 60 day deadline.
I think all of us are like, in the next.
But if they.
That's why they're today.
Just filed in September, which.
When do I file my payment?
September.
Well, we can, we can extend that with your permission. To do a little more research, um.
I guess, I guess if, if you guys get to talk to Parker appraisal company, which seems like what the next step is, I guess. I understand that at this point in the process, the burden of proof is on me from the homeowner to prove that the assessment does not, does not represent, right? And so I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what, what burden is that? If, if what I have presented isn't enough, what is enough, right?
Well, you followed their recommendation and got a market analysis, you also got a market analysis, you guys happen to be on each other's appraisal. Um, so I'm wondering, you know, I don't, I unfortunately don't have the answer to that this evening.
I, I understand, yeah.
Um, and I.
But the board of assessors, if you appeal, may have the same opinion you have, or they may have the same opinions Parker, you may already have enough documentation.
Well, I guess that's what I'm trying, if, if the, if the municipal assessment is supposed to be a 10% plus or minus of what the current market value of the property is, which is what Bob told me when we talked on the phone. It seems like I, I just want to know what my burden of proof is to prove what the property is worth right now. And then it's just, if you guys want to jack, if you guys want to bring up my 10% and tax me at that, then cool. Like, I, I get it, those are the rules. I just am not sure what I have to supply to prove that the current evaluation is not within 10%.
Well, and it appears that you followed their recommendation, but there, I have other questions on formulation and, and attributes that were used to tabulate the tax on some of those also.
Sure, yeah.
And Christine said there wasn't another property in West Ben, but that's not your fault.
Right. Well, then that's not how real estate works. You don't say, I'm only going to value in this neighborhood. You value based upon similar characteristics. And there's, and there's mileage and things that play into that, and they add and, and they, and take away from value based upon that. So, um, at this point, I'm going to move that we, um, table with the, um, propertyer permission a property located at 41 Tides End Road until further clarification can be found.
My second bet, all in favor? Can we just recap, the only one we approved was A, right?
I don't, this is my approval by.
Delano.
You approved Delano and Dow.
Unit two.
So A and B is.
That's the approval by, rest for stable, table pile. And I have a, is there a Xerox, so maybe I might take that, the third selection.
That's what, that's that, business equipment tax.
Okay. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have another agenda? That's okay, you, sorry, no worries, you can keep that one.
All right.
Currently on the.
So business item two is 2023 municipal evaluation return.
This is something that the D A populates out of Trio. After we commit taxes, we're required to submit it to the state by November 1st. Requires the signature of the board of assessors.
Do we have that?
It's in your packet.
It is? What does it look like? Oh, yeah, it's a last name. Hold that up. No, I don't know. I saw, I think I extended it, I think I extended too. Can you see what it looks like on the first page? I put it through. Get taxes, I get more.
We don't like.
You're going to get the whole town. Because you want to sell chickens with it. Oh, there it is, look at that. Can we table that too? I would have my table pile, I'd have to table it. I don't know if that's it. Where the heck is it?
Do you don't have it?
I do, it's somewhere. It's a stable document, no, won't find it. I don't know what that is, I'm just going to come up.
Here, you can look one up.
Oh, nope. That's not it, no.
Ten pages.
I've got too many stacks here.
I took your agenda to the head office.
Share.
Share.
You got $705 million in my stipend, that's bad. And we have to pay Sagard Hot Kelly.
I'll take half of that, we've got people in the service.
Throw a couple of chickens on. Okay. We need man. All right, I'm good with it.
Motion.
I move that we approve, as I choke, $705 million, $704,420, $720 on behalf of the town of Sust.
My second bet, all in favor? Business item three, assesses notification, Xerox Financial Services LLC.
This is, um, the business equipment tax reimbursement for 2022. And the figures have been verified.
So we need to accept this?
Yes.
I reluctantly accept the. Is it an abatement?
No, it's business equipment tax.
The Betty, I, I reluctantly accept the Betty, um, tax reimbursement for Bradley Elector. It's in total of $5,643.
Second bet, all in favor?
Same place?
Oh, there it is.
And just your signature will be mine, happy.
Do we have any select board comments, announcements?
I have a comment. I would love to have a meeting in my Parker appraisal.
Don't think we can go forward without that.
So I, I, I think it's, um, I'd like to chat about what other things we have.
I'll talk with them, see what they can do.
And I think this vote, we don't have to do it outside of.
Absolutely.
Any scheduled meeting, any.
It's just a meet, it's just a, a meeting to understand this process better. Um, and, and please have them in preparation for that meeting, have the data that I need to tabulate this information, um, because it's, I want to make sure I'm doing right on behalf of everyone, whatever that happens to be, whatever numbers, where the chips fall where they may. I just want to be able to tabulate it, so everyone feels fair and just, and that's really all I'm trying to achieve.
Could it be a public meeting even if the public couldn't ask questions?
Oh, it will be a public meeting.
So are we going back to your original thoughts and what you put out a month ago? That you, an informational meeting for the, for the public, for people who are unhappy with their assessment, that you could explain what this is, what that is on there? How come, can you explain to me why it's 1.25 times that?
I would recommend that it be conducted as a workshop, so that the board can get all of, all of your questions answered without, you know, allow you to deliberate and ask questions without hearing from the public until the end.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that too. My, my concern is, we have this bunch now, we've got to, we've got to get through this. I don't think this is going to be the last meeting with Parker appraisal, and I think he needs to know that because these are unique, and I'm sure the next bunch are going to be different than these ones. And have some uniqueness, so I think he needs to be available to us maybe.
Sooner than later. Well, and I'd like it sooner than later.
Well, I initially thought I'd like it that.
Absolutely.
You know, because it's, it's, I think it's important that we get, we get scolded on the information, so that we can then share it properly.
And I think Madeline has a different perspective than you or I, so I think if all of us being here, it would be.
But in the same timeframe, when, when we talk about a public meeting, I think we should find out when they're available to do that, what we have from a schedule, that should be, um.
Different?
Oh, the workshop should be different than this initial meeting that we need to, to use for information. I think the workshop should be, um, and, and understood that, that you're not there to ask questions about specific properties. That's, that's a, a key piece to that, but we'll talk about the process generically.
I was going to say, if Parker wasn't available, could we get somebody else to do that?
I think it should be Parker.
It needs to be Parker.
I think it's their, their.
It's their methodology.
But their methodology shouldn't be any different than any others' assessment.
No, no, it, it will be. You'll find that it is.
Okay. That's concerning.
Well, and I said.
No, it's just the way it works.
Well, and also, I don't, I don't want to make this, I don't want to say hold them accountable, I don't mean it as a scolding element, but to have them as, represent their work. Um, and share with us how they came to their answers, I don't think you'd ask someone else to do that for them.
That's true too, and there's a lot of apparent deals or things said that weren't followed through on.
That weren't, they were, there was commitments made that were not honored, um, and that's.
I will say, I agree with Dean, when Parker comes in here to explain his process, if it's more than one of you in attendance, I don't see any grounds that that would be an executive session.
Oh, no.
And any assessor in the world should be prepared to speak with great clarity to the questions they use, the elected assessors are going to present. The rest of us, no, but we should be able to sit there in the back row and hear the questions, hear the answers without any participation by any of us.
And if you, if there's a question that was not asked, that you have one kind of, a generic question in nature, not pertinent to any particular parcel, should be acceptable. But there, there's.
At the end.
At the end, but there, there'll be no individual analysis at that time. It's informative on how this process went, how it was, how your property generically is tabulated for taxation and valuation, and that's really the, the method behind that.
And he probably has his data, the Raffles Sales Back Office, Christine kindly mentioned at an earlier meeting and permitted you to look at, when I finally got the time to pop in last week, but I would anticipate he will have data for you. Or perhaps definitions. So, deep water, when I heard these folks speaking, I heard them say they had titled, which most of us may not say, it's titled. But there is a difference between it slaps to two and a half foot and it flat, rocky bottoms out, and I believe I heard her saying it goes to flat bottom. Well, I think I heard him saying, well, it's titled, which I may have said, but when you look at your cost structure that has been developed by this particular firm, I think you're going to find a hundred thousand dollar difference on an acre between whether we speak as maynes, uh, whether we say she's flat bottom, she's two and a half feet, uh, she's pretty much constantly, I've got a 20 footer and I can get out there. Just saying.
And that, and that's really what we need to understand, I'll call it the gradients, or the, um, the scale that's used to determine valuation. And, you know, what, what is a one? And what's a point nine? Or a 1.1, because I've seen a 1.1, but what is that? How do you determine one? Is it by age, size? What, I, I need to understand the formula.
A manual tip with frequency.
So that you can, you can, you, you, like you said, you should be able to tabulate based upon the math what it should be.
And I'd like to verify my data. I'd like to see what data is fed in, verify that it's all correct. And then, chips fall to the man.
How about footage? Does, does footage enter into that, whether you got 100 feet or 200 feet?
It does.
What I've seen on what my research is, it's, there's great inconsistency.
There's a, there's a grading system.
There's a mega inconsistency.
And we need to figure, I, I believe that the last meeting you found that you were, you were classified as.
Well, I'm waiting, I, I have, I'm stabilized, but you're going to hear from me again, whether me or someone that's going to represent me. Because I'm really feel, I have 23,000 square feet, I'm being taxed at $36 a square foot, but every square foot, $800,000, and I couldn't, I know I couldn't get that amount of money from my piece.
I understand. I do.
We're talking big dollars.
We, we. My goal, and I believe this all, is to make sure everyone feels confident in what we've all gone through, and that it's fair and just. And that's really what we're looking to do.
Also, can we submit questions in advance that you guys could consider asking?
That's a great idea.
I know it's a great idea.
Okay.
I think that would be really helpful, because it gives them a heads up too, what current information does they need to provide.
Any other public comment?
Yes.
And on the assessments, as you point out, yes, uh, we need to know the definitions of all these terms. We should have access to whatever manual, if there exists a manual, uh, for Trio and the way Parker does it. But even so, as I've pointed out a number of times, and you agree, there are these quality factors that are ultimately subjective, whether it's a 2.0, which means whatever value you get, multiply it by a two, what's that? But even beyond that, and hopefully we get a manual or something of that sort that we can look at, even beyond that, there is still the assessing, uh, Judgment has to be based on an overview of the whole town, comparing all the properties. When you guys look at one particular property, and you look at the card and a few numbers here and there. You still do not have the perspective that hopefully the assessor has of looking over the whole town. And that's necessary in order to have a uniform assessment across the town.
I agree with that.
But you wouldn't think that would be individual to a particular property? Like, that would kind of be a number that applied kind of to a region, maybe, or?
Well, I mean, they can look at a property and say, uh, gee whiz, uh. Who makes a good point, this is a credit property, and the assessor might say, well, old properties, we compared it to a credit, so therefore this value stands, and they don't know.
I had asked to look at the old assessment manual, but I'm not sure what they.
We haven't located it yet.
I, I think it would be. Very clear, very helpful to bridge the gap of, of the conversation.
Who did our priority look?
Vision.
I'm sorry.
I don't know, it's been that long ago. Do you know?
It was Vision.
It was Vision. Yes, Dan?
If we've done the assessing questions, I have one other town question. I don't want to wait to make sure they're all assessing questions are answered first.
Here it is.
All right, here we're done, as you said, uh, can you give us an update on the Verge Point Road repairs?
It's in process. So the contract has been awarded, as far as I know, they've started the project.
You live down there, correct? Has it been started? Has it looked?
It's starting, yeah.
Yeah, they need to be done by November first, I think.
Okay.
Are they uncharted for that?
Being paid and everything?
Does it look like that's achievable?
I don't know, I don't think so.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, but.
It's always darkest, straight up with it. And when is daylight savings falling on its app? Right?
Do you get an extra? Other public comments, questions, concerns?
I'll ask for concerns.
Going?
I just want to say thank you for holding this meeting and for keeping our best interests at heart, I really appreciate it.
I'm great, thank you.
Here we're done, I make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Probably will put down a website.
Want to do this.
What are the new schedules for that?
If you're not receiving my weekly emails with meetings and events, please come see me to give me your email address, I have a little weekly email on meetings and events. Anyone watching the video, you can download it at westbathman.gov.
Charlie and Christine did a lot of work to get all of that winged on. That was incredible. It was incredibly helpful, and I regret.